Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for May 16, 2011. I'd like to begin by having our clerk please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory is absent tonight. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent tonight. Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Brenza.
Here.
Police Administrative Assistant Rice. We have two of our police and fire commissioners, Musial and Forensic, here.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item before us, for the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting, April 28, and board meeting held May 2, 2011. We have a motion.
Motion to approve Seneca?
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call on the minutes, please.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, reports. I would like to begin by conducting one of my favorites, and as always, to welcome new staff members to the Village of Westmont. And this evening, we have the swearing-in ceremony of a new police officer. And he is here with us this evening. And to introduce him, we have our police chief, Tom Mulhern. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Ron. It's my honor and privilege to introduce to you appropriationate police officer, Brandon Zeeman. Brandon will be sworn in by Mayor Ron this evening, and then afterwards, he'll tell us a little bit about himself, as mentioned a couple of comments. Also here with Brandon tonight is his wife, Jennifer. And also, it's an honor to have his parents, Mr. Michael and Nancy Zeeman, here with us to watch Brandon get sworn in.
So, anytime you're ready, sir. Thank you. This did involve our work, police and fire commissioners who did a lot of the groundwork, leading up to your joining our police staff. Thank you. The oath of office. I state your name.
Aye, Brandon Zeeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the County of DuPage and the fine Village of Westmont.
The laws of the County of DuPage and the fine Village of Westmont.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of... And that?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
See, sometimes I combine all that in. Some people, it's difficult to remember. Try to split it up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Tell Officer Zeeman not to feel bad when I remember getting sworn in about two years ago, and the mayor got me on the same line as well, so it was deja vu. At this time, I have Brandon, tell us a little bit about himself, so you have a little bit of history of him. Brandon will be with our department for the next 20-plus years. We're looking for... And also, but right now, he'll be in the, what's called, the field training officer program, which I'll explain a little bit, so Officer Zeeman.
Hi. I've been serving as a police officer up in the village around Lake for almost five years now, looking to move back near family and serve similarly a nice village. And been on SWAT team for two years. Hopefully, I'll rise to that level here, and I'm looking forward to serving for, like you said, at least 20 years.
Great.
Glad to be here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, but as I said, Brandon will be going through the field training phase first, which approximately will be 13 weeks long. After that time period, we have very high hopes he'll fly through that phase and then be out on his own. And he just now makes us to be the 37th sworn police officer of the department. And Mayor, I also would like to echo the thanks of Chairman Bob, Robert Cavanda, Officer, I'm sorry, Commissioners Hersonak and Vince Musial for their efforts for the last two-plus years. They've been going through candidate after candidate. They've had additional testing, not only from regular police officers, but for our certified higher police officers, they changed their rules. And we're very, very hopeful that the process will keep on moving. And we want to thank Officer Zeeman and look forward to seeing him over the next many, many, many years. With that, open up for any questions that you may have.
We're looking forward to the fine service that he'll provide our village during the years to come.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You've got a good boss, too, Brandon. Keep him around for a while, too.
We'll try.
Next, I would like to offer my congratulations. Unfortunately, I missed several meetings because I was supposed to go into the hospital for an overnight procedure, and I ended up being in the hospital for about a little more than a week. So, it set me back, but I'm very disappointed that I was not able to be here for the swearing-in ceremony. For Sue Seneca, newly-elected, newly-re-elected Village trustee.
Thank you.
As well as Bob Scott.
Thank you.
And to also welcome Steve Nero aboard as the new Village trustee.
Thank you.
So, my congratulations and welcome aboard, and may we continue to work together as a team as we have in the past and into the future. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a plan.
Then, I have several, I have three resolutions that I would like to read this evening. And the first one is for National Police Week.
Do you want to do that on the agenda, or do you want to do it together?
Oh, if they're all on the agenda, we're just...
Well, except...
The one.
Yeah, yeah. I'll just do this one.
Ms. Murphy.
The first two are part of the official agenda, but I found out last week that one of the favorite teachers that had worked with all three of our children at South School as they were growing up is going to retire from District 201. And we have always thought very, very highly of her. She's been an excellent teacher. And to go along with that, I had a resolution prepared to honor her that I will read this evening. It'll be part of our official agenda at our next board meeting. But there's a celebration for her this coming Saturday, so I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. So, this is a resolution recognizing Kathy Murphy's significant educational contributions to Westmont students. Whereas Kathy Murphy is affectionately known throughout community unit District 201 as Ms. Murphy by students and faculty alike. And whereas Ms. Murphy began her teaching career in 1967 at Visitation Catholic School in Elmhurst, Illinois. And whereas Ms. Murphy was hired in 1978 by Ruth Hurley to teach first grade at South School in Westmont. And whereas Ms. Murphy taught first grade at South School until the 2003, 2004 school year, when she taught a split first and second grade class, and thereafter only taught second grade at South School. And whereas Ms. Murphy moved to Manning School in Westmont 2007 and 2008 where she taught second grade. And whereas Ms. Murphy is known as the Little Leprechaun on St. Patrick's Day and is well-known for her St. Patrick's Day celebration amongst her students and parents. And whereas Ms. Murphy has contributed to the academic success of hundreds of students throughout her 44-year teaching career that has had a lasting positive impact upon so many. And whereas Ms. Murphy is retiring at the end of the 2011 school year after 33 years of teaching here in the Village of Westmont. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Ms. Murphy for her 33 years as a teacher in Community School District 201. And be it resolved that the public is hereby invited to celebrate with Kathy Murphy at a retirement celebration this coming Saturday, May 21, at Westmont South School at 133 South Grant from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Congratulations, Ms. Murphy, for a wonderful, wonderful career, teaching so many students here in the Village of Westmont. Thank you. And that is all that I have right now. Moving right along our village. Clerk?
I have several announcements since we won't have another meeting till the end of the month. First of all, I want to welcome you back. You were greatly missed, and I'm glad to see you. Your voice is strong again, and you're looking good.
Thank you.
So, welcome back. This Friday, May 20, our police chief and two deputy chiefs will be on the roof of Dunkin' Donuts, raising money for Special Olympics from 6:00 a.m. till 12 o'clock noon. So, everybody go by and see the chief and his deputies. They'll be up there, raising money. Also, it's a relay for life for our cancer survivors, so that's this Friday night, starting, I believe it starts at 6:00. Doesn't it usually start at 6:00?
At 6:00 a.m. At Ty Warner.
At Ty Warner Park. Then the red, white, and barbecue is May 27, 28, and 29, Memorial Day weekend at Ty Warner Park, always a fun time for everybody. St. Jude's Race to the Flag is also held on May 29, so sign up to race or walk. And that starts at between 6:00 and 7:45 on the morning of the 29th, with the race starting at 8:00. You sign up from 6:00 to 7:45. The other thing that will start this coming up is the Cruise into Summer Tents Sale for our auto mile dealers, and that starts May 23 to June 4 with their tents sales. They also will be sponsoring a free cruise for active troops and veterans. They will draw for this, so be sure that they go in and sign up. That's a nice thing to do for our troops. And of course, our Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day. So, that'll kick off at 10:00 or 10:30. I don't see Frank, but it's in here, it's in our agenda, so that's all I have. That's enough.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Our village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you, and again, welcome back, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that we have our next upcoming budget workshop on May 23 here at 7:00 in the boardroom here. That's it.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, unfinished business. Westmont Center, Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving a Lease with Marker School District 60 for Certain Space at the Westmont Center at One South Chaos. I'd just like to mention that several of the board members and the superintendent from District 60 are also here with us this evening. Westmont Center, Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving a Lease with Marker School District 60 for Certain Space at the Westmont Center at One South Chaos. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Discussion?
Just to quickly reiterate my comments of Thursday, I really, really want to work with 201, or 201, excuse me, with Marker, and hopefully reach some sort of compromise that'll work for both sides. I would really love to see them in Westmont Center, really want to work with them as a taxing body. On the flip side of it, because we have this comprehensive plan coming, and we don't know what the vision is for that property, at the same time, I don't want to tie us into too long of a lease with that building, so it's a tough one. I'd love to see it work.
Has anything changed since Thursday, to the best of anyone's knowledge? I mean, are we still at the same point we were at?
Correct. Okay, any other? Any other comments?
Is the superintendent here to say anything, or just to witness the vote?
Well, the superintendent or the board members, if any, you would like to make a statement that would be most appropriate this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the Westmont Village Board. We really appreciate your consideration of lease agreement with our school district. And my appeal is that you really take into consideration the educational program for the students within Marker District 60 as you consider this. We are beginning to experience some significant growth at our primary school, the Holmes Elementary School, which houses preschool through the second grade. And last year and this year, we're seeing a significant increase in our enrollment numbers, as well as programmatic changes that we've experienced in recent years with a growing second language population, a bilingual program, other support, special education programs within the building, that have really, really added to the stressors in the building in terms of space. And the district office has been housed there for probably forever. And yet, we need to seek other, another home for the district office, because our priority is to provide adequate space for our students. And we're certainly hoping that we would be able to come to an agreement with, you know, regarding Westmont Center. If not, unfortunately, given the timing and so forth, we'll be in a position to have to raise class sizes for our youngest students in the district. These are the youngsters who need the best start, obviously. They're just entering school. There are a lot of expectations for our students and our staff, a lot of programmatic pressures. And, you know, we have worked very, very hard as a school system. The Board has worked very, very hard as a Board of Education to maintain the, probably some of the best class sizes that we can provide our youngsters, to give them the absolute best educational start. And that's our greatest concern. And at this point in time, we would not have any other option but to increase those class sizes, which would be a considerable detriment to the program we offer our students. So, again, I appreciate your consideration, hope you will take that into consideration, and I welcome you to visit our schools at any time. We'd love to have you and take a look at what we're doing there, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would care to comment at this time?
So, just so I understand it, what we're approving tonight is the proposal that we're agreeing to, but not the one that they're agreeing to?
No, what's on the agenda is what they have proposed. And their proposal is that it's, you know, the three-year lease with three-year extensions, and the village would retain the right to terminate the lease during the second of the three-year extensions, only if you have an offer to purchase, and only if you give 365 days' notice. There was some discussion whether if you could exercise that option during the first of the three-year renewals as well, but the district felt like they needed, you know, the additional time to cover their capital improvements, whatever. So, what's on the table is their proposal.
Any other comments? With that being said, it's the clerk to take the roll call.
Trustee Scott?
No.
Trustee Fleming?
No.
Trustee Seneca?
No.
Trustee Nero?
No.
Okay, motion fails. It would be nice to see if there were some possibility of some further negotiations as has been indicated by the board members, for us to work out another solution that perhaps would be something that was workable for both District 60 and the Village of Westmont.
I think we're all in unanimous agreement on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming in this evening. Board to consider a resolution for an honorary street name designating Cass Avenue between Richmond and Dallas Streets, Greg's Road, in honor of the 30th anniversary of the Greg House Museum.
Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Nero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, variance request, 315 South Grant. Board to consider an ordinance granting variance for a lot coverage to permit construction of a single-family home at 315 South Grant.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, Shell Gas Station, 2 East 63rd. Board to consider ordinances approving the following for Shell Gas Station property at 2 East 63rd. A, limited area groundwater ordinance, and B, limited environmental indemnity agreement. Do we have a motion on 5A?
Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Nero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Point B.
Motion to approve, Scott. Motion to approve, Fleming?
We need those Jeopardy buttons.
Okay, I'm giving that one to Scott. Do you want to be the second?
Sure, I'll just second it. Fleming?
Does everybody agree to that?
We do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, conceptual discussion, 233 West 63rd. Board to consider motion providing non-binding conceptual approval for a restaurant use with a children's playroom slash rec room for the entire retail area of the property of a Westmont Yard at 233 West 63rd Street.
Motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Seneca.
Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, final plat request.
I don't know if this is allowed, but can I ask a question? If it's not allowed, that's totally fine.
With the, with the board's permission, is anyone?
He raised his hand.
I'm fine.
He raised his hand.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Come up to the podium, please, sir.
You guys were rolling. Thank you very much. I just had a quick question. What do we just approve? If it means it's non-binding, like, what?
They like your idea, and that's all they're saying.
They're just saying that they like it, okay.
And what we're gonna have to do is go through and likely amend the plan development agreement.
Okay.
Which I promised last Thursday I would look at, and I'm going to do it early this week, to see whether you need to go through the public hearing process to amend that.
Okay.
The restaurant use is permitted use, so that's no problem.
Okay.
The only issue is, because, remember, you were gonna break that up.
Right, right, yes.
And we were specifying a certain percentage had to be used for retail.
Correct.
Whether this conflicts with that in any way. If not, then you simply need to come in with building plans and get your approval from staff, and go to the mayor's liquor commissioner if the end user wants a liquor license.
Okay. Okay. So, does that, because I just need to, sorry, I need to go and start on the architectural plans and shell out money, but I'm okay to go do that, or okay to move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
To do that, now, again, this couldn't be subject to a public hearing to amend the plan development agreement.
Is this what we consider a public hearing?
No. That's actually...
Oh, the Thursday, last Thursday was a public hearing.
Well, it would be future.
But, I mean, that was the general...
That would be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission on a Wednesday night.
Okay.
Like you did when you got your original approvals.
Yes.
And we published in the newspaper, and surrounding property owners are allowed to come in and say whether they agree or disagree with your proposal.
Okay.
I don't believe that's gonna be necessary.
Okay.
In the event that's not necessary, then all you need is building permits from downstairs.
Okay. And when will we know whether we have, which way we have to go?
By tomorrow. I'll email you.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sorry about that. I just, if I have to put out money, I just wanted to exactly find out where we stood. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, final plat request, Standard Market. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision request from West Highland Capital Partners for the Standard Market at 333 East Ogden Avenue, Westmont.
Motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Final plat request, Soli Subdivision. Board to consider an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision and right-of-way dedication for American Chartered Bank for property at 22 West 56th Place.
Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Nero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Federal Participation, CMAC Project. Board to consider an ordinance approving the Construction Phase III Engineering Services Agreement for the 2008 CMAC Sidewalk and 60th Street Culvert Project.
Motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Closure of Cass Avenue for Memorial Day Parade. Board to consider an ordinance approving the closure of Cass Avenue from Naperville Road to 55th Street for the annual Memorial Day Parade. And I understand that our fire chief, Frank Trout, would like to make a comment at this time. Chief Trout.
Good evening. Good to see you back, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
The American Legion Post 338, which each year sponsors the parade, over the last few years, would like to invite the public to the parade and also for the service after that. Our commander, U. Winston, asked me to be here tonight to make that invitation, and also to the members of the village board. The parade is on Monday, the 30th, at step-off time is 9:30 a.m. We will stage in the area of Linden and Chicago Avenue, which is approximately one block east of Cass Avenue on Chicago. After the parade, at approximately 11:15, there's going to be a memorial service at Veterans Memorial Park. We have a tentative speaker of Lieutenant Colonel. I'm not gonna... We have a tentative speaker of Lieutenant Colonel, I'm not going to mention his name now, he has not firmed up with me, but we spoke as of yesterday, and outstanding young man from the infantry, from the 75th Infantry Division, formerly 101st Airborne Soldier, which I'm proud to say that I was in his unit probably almost 40 years before he was there. But outstanding young man. The parade, during the parade, everyone who's invited to attend and participate in that parade, what we ask is that there be no throwing of candy from any vehicles or any float units, and that no political handouts be distributed. We encourage different political groups to come, but please do not use this as a political rally. This is a memorial, memorial service. There will not be any blowing of sirens or horns. This is a, this is for our departed veterans. So, anyway, I'd like to invite you all, and the public, and any veteran, if they would like to come, and if they're not able to walk, we have a float available for them, and arrangements can be made. Prior to that, we also have a ceremony at the Clerton Hill Cemetery at 9:00 a.m., which is put on by the veterans of foreign wars, for any veteran or any citizen that would like to also attend that. So, anyway, thank you very much, and hope to see you at the parade.
Okay, now, the parade isn't starting right at 9:30, is it?
The parade steps off at, I'm sorry, at 10:30.
Thank you.
Very, thank you. 10:30, thank you.
You said 9:30, you had me a little confused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Nero.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Water Rate Analysis for Fiscal Year 2012. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving a Pass Through Water Rate Increase of .31 Cent per 1,000 Gallons for All Customers Effective With Usage Measured After Mid-June Routine Reader Meeting. Meter Reading. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Begrudgingly, yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Reluctantly, yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Extremely begrudgingly, yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Proclamation, Board to Consider Proclamation Declaring the Week of May 15th through May 21st as National Police Week here in Westmont, and across the country as well. National Police Week, whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving all the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Westmont Police Department, and whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1792, nearly 19,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., and whereas 324 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial this spring, including 116 officers killed in 2009, and 2008 officer killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 23rd Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Friday, May 13th, 2011. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year, starting May 15th through the 21st. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William Ron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Westmont, do hereby proclaim the 15th through the 21st of May as Police Week here in the Village of Westmont. And we publicly salute the service of the men and women of the Westmont Police Department and those law enforcement officers protecting us in all communities across this great nation.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Fleming.
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
The next proclamation, Board to Consider a Proclamation Declaring the Week of May 15th to 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Okay. Thank you. EMS Week Proclamation, to designate the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2011, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Services System consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And therefore, I, William Ron, in recognition of this event, do proclaim May 15th to the 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week. Blowing along with the theme EMS, Everyday Heroes, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you. Next item.
Motion approved, Scott.
We've got the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Surplus Property, Board to Consider an Ordinance Declaring Certain Vehicles as Surplus Property and Authorizing the Auction of Said Vehicles at the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, Closure of Cass Avenue for Torch Run. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving the Closure of Southbound Cass Avenue from Trobe Avenue to Burlington for the annual torch run for Special Olympics on Sunday, June 5th, 2011. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Personnel Code Amendment. Board to Consider an Ordinance Amending Section 62-56 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances Regarding the Use of Staffing Agencies.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Finance Ordinance Number Two.
We have before us on this 16th day of May, 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $773,044.14.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Purchase Orders.
Motion to approve is a block of $56,850.19.
Second, Nero.
Just clean wait for Mark not to say that.
Somebody's got to do it.
I'm sitting in a seat.
I'm sorry. I apologize. By all means.
That's why he took the seat, hello.
I'll pass the torch.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call on purchase orders.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have a request for this evening for an executive session, and with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Listen to adjourn, Nero.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Thank you.